Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience. It's shortly after our scheduled start time at 7:30. Today is May 16th. Welcome to the meeting of Lakewood City Council. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Anderson.
Present.
Bullock.
Here.
Litton.
Here.
Marks.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
O'Leary.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Meeting and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of Council of Health and Wellness Section 2016.
Move to dispose of the minutes without the necessity of reading.
Second.
Motion to be made. Seconded, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those abstaining?
Abstaining.
And any nays? That motion passes. Yes, if we could, without objection, I'd like to move items seven and eight to the top of our docket.
Item seven, communication from Council President O'Leary regarding Tuesday, May 22, 2016, Keep Lakewood Beautiful Board Burj Grove dedication.
Thank you. Dear Members of Council, attached is a resolution commemorating special Burj Grove dedications to Keep Lakewood Beautiful Board hosting Tuesday, May 24th. That's next Tuesday, at 5:30 PM at Lakewood Park. The event will honor all who have served on the board but will pay special tribute to Marine Promote, who passed away unexpectedly in 2013. Approval of the attached resolution will help celebrate this event and recognize Ms. Promote's loyal contribution to our community. Yours truly. Move that that communication be received and filed.
Second.
Motion to be made. Seconded, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item eight, Resolution 8866-16, resolution to commemorate generous contributions of time and capital put forth by the Keep Lakewood Beautiful Board and its volunteers to initiate the planning of the new Burj Grove in Lakewood Park.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to be made. Seconded, any discussion on the motion to adopt? I would just say that, as we've noticed in past meetings, Keep Lakewood Beautiful does outstanding work in our community. Their board is an incredibly dedicated and impassioned group of people who, again, really do amazing things and improve our quality of life here in so many ways. So I think that this is a really special dedication and for those who knew Ms. Promote personally, she was a very special person. And I really look forward to this dedication and seeing the Burj Grove, which is already there, but I look forward to seeing it with new significance in the future. Any other comment before we proceed with the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. At this time, I would ask that if we, I believe, do we have Keep Lakewood Beautiful Board members here tonight to receive the resolution or are we doing that at the dedication next week?
Whatever is in season.
Should we do, how many are here tonight? Just you, okay. Why don't we go ahead and do the presentation at the Burj Grove dedication if that's okay?
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Yes, and then, without objection, I'd also like to move items 14 and 15 up to the items three and four.
Item 14, communication from Council Member Litton regarding St. Edward High School, 2016 Wrestling State Championships.
Council Litton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear colleagues, I have the honor to once again recognize the student athletes of St. Edward High School. During the 2016 season, the Eagles of St. Edward achieved a tradition of success, winning an unprecedented 30th OHSAA state championship in wrestling. The St. Edward won the state grooming championship for the second time as well and finished the season ranked seventh nationally. Winning a championship of this magnitude is no small accomplishment. To do so with such regularity is simply incredible. This year's victories added to state records for championships with 30, state qualifiers with 401, state pledges with 300, and individual state championships with 105. Indeed, if St. Edward High School alumni were competing as one team at the NCAA level this season, they would have been a formidable team as well with six NCAA qualified. Congratulations to the team, coaches, families, and the entire St. Edward community. Job well done and best of luck to the graduating seniors as they move on to college. Please join me in recognizing the significant achievement. And I'll only add to Coach Erbus as my honors freshman algebra teacher, thank you for your commitment to building young men not only as athletes but as students and as citizens as well. So, yours in service.
Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion to be made. Seconded, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item 15, Resolution 8867-16, a resolution to honor St. Edward High School 2015-2016 wrestling team on capturing their second OHSAA state grooming championship and 30th OHSAA individual state championship.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Congratulations. Yeah, would you care to invite folks up?
Sure. Coach Erbus team, if you'd all like to come up. And Coach, have you got a few words to say?
I want to thank City of Lakewood for the resolution. It means a lot to us. Every place we travel, it's always Lakewood, St. Edward High School. I've got three of the seniors with us, three captains of the wrestling teams. Very, very proud of them. Starting at 145 pounds, Isaac Collier. He'll be continuing his studies in wrestling at Case Western Reserve University. At 152 pounds, they're not near that weight class now. Jack Conley, and he wrestled 152 for us, captain of the team. He's going to be attending at University of Pennsylvania and also wrestle there and do rotters, so he'll be quite busy there. And then at 170 pounds, Jared Lydic, did the wrestling at Eastern Michigan, continuing their studies. I believe all three will be working on his work business degree. So, want to give them a round of applause.
If you guys can step up, we'll get some pictures. Couple more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
Sure you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll continue the shuffle and move item number 16 up to item number five.
Item 16, Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board Preservation Awards, Chair Rick Seegum.
This is one of my personal favorites the entire council calendar year. Further ado, Mr. Seegum.
Let's just pledge it here.
Good evening. I'm Rick Seegum, Chair of the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board. We'd like to welcome everyone to the 15th Annual Historic Preservation Awards for City of Lakewood. El have on behalf of the administration and council as well as our other appointing authorities, the Lakewood Historical Society and the Chamber of Commerce, would like to thank the building owners, their architects, and contractors who respect the architecture, design, and craftsmanship of their buildings while at the same time keeping them in places to raise a family, create jobs, and provide services to the community. Believe in the half, I would just like to take a second and just recognize other current advisory board members. Hillary Schickler, Stephen Jurilis, Frank Scalish, and Jeff Weber. What I'd like to do is have a short set of slides and then we'll present the property owners with their certificates and then we can do a little bit of a review of them. We have six recipients this year. It's rather an unusual group. For the first time in many years, there aren't, don't happen to be any commercial awards. Not that folks aren't investing in commercial areas because there's all sorts of work going on, but what folks seem to be concentrating on at the moment is awnings and signage on the outside and working on the interior of their spaces. And, you know, we don't, we don't generate these projects, we're just out looking for them for both on the residential and commercial side. And with the six residential that have come up, they're sort of clumped in two places in the city as well. So with that, I'd like to start, I'd like to note that this presentation is part of National Historic Preservation Month, which is a nationwide celebration of special places to communities. This presentation is a part of that monthly activities tonight. And Lakewood Alive has a continuing series of Know Your Home educational programs. There's one later this week on best ways to contract for repair. And finally, today started Lakewood Historical Society's 7th Annual Architectural Scavenger Hunt, which runs till the end of July. Entry forms are available around town and there are prizes. 15th annual awards, and the first one that we have, I always do that, I always read this off of this and then the slide always comes up. So, next. In the category of rehabilitation, we have 1291 Edenola Avenue. This modest house that accosted $2,300 was built in 1914. This is a before picture. It's a couple of things to take a look at, both the roof that's on it that needs replacement, the metal awning, and the porch that you can't see where the porch rails are either. And as the slides go on, you'll see the changes that have occurred. The owner installed a new slate roof to replace the asphalt chingle that, roof that was there, you know, quite an investment but certainly long-term on the property. The metal awning is now gone and the original porch rails were uncovered and the original tongue-in-groove porch ceiling was also stripped, plain, and stained. So there's a number of improvements that have really made a difference in how that property looks. Also in the category of rehabilitation, 1720 Clifton Boulevard. This 1913 house was designed by Knox &amp; Elliott. Now, that's the architectural firm that downtown did the Rockefeller Building, the Standard Building, and the Brotherhood of Locomotive Engineers office buildings. The first owner was Hyman Davis, who was a U.S. Marshal who then became president of a insurance company. This is the before scene, the project involved rebuilding the front stair feature to the house. Every, every project needs a good foundation and there's plenty of foundation that went into the support of this. And this is what it looks like today with, from both this view looking up and a view down towards the street. In the category of historic rehabilitation, the restoration work that went on, 16926 Clifton Boulevard, this 1900 house, one of its early owners was a bookkeeper for a bronze and brass works that made plumbing fittings. These property owners have worked on both, there we go, restoration of their porch as well as installation of a new slate roof that replaced an old slate roof. And this is a house that has metal porch railings, but they're not the metal railings that came along in the 50s and 60s. These are actually much older and are really part of the house and that was all restored as well. So, obviously, a job like that, a lot of scaffolding, a lot of, a lot of materials going into the job as well, and quite the production on the block when it was underway. Also in the category of rehabilitation, now we're moving to the east side of town, 1436 Grace Avenue, 1898 house. Owned, one of the early owners was a partner in a law firm. This is the, this is a house that was one of the two rooming houses that were redone. So this house was scheduled for demolition and Lakewood Alive and the Detroit Shoreway Community Development Organization offered a plan to save this house. And it's now permanently a single-family house that has been completely rehabilitated and I believe it's going to also be on the Lakewood Historical Society home tour in September. In the category of historic rehabilitation, 1463 Grace Avenue, just down the street, 1893 house, president of a sewing machine company lived here in the 1910s. This project involved restoring the original sandstone porch, which was the completely disassembled steps and all. All the pieces were removed from where they were at, reinforced for foundation, and everything was put right back in, like, as they say, like it never even happened. So, a lovely porch restoration for that 100-plus, 120 almost-year-old house. And finally, Preservation Honor Award also on Grace Avenue to 1568 Grace, which obviously a lot of people know, the Harvey Happenberg House. The current owners, George Graham and Michael Fleener, have put a lot of work into this property over the decade that they have owned it, both inside and outside. And the paint scheme is, you know, this is, this is an older view of the house, about a decade after it was built, for the executive of Downland International Carving Company. And it's really probably the best, one of the best examples in town in paint and style architecture. And really, you know, the attention that the homeowners have put into the property as a whole, and when you think about the paint scheme and all of the work that went into that, they used that black-and-white photo to generate their ideas for the light and dark accents for the, for the paint scheme and how they highlighted the detail both in the tower and around the entrance. So, there we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is another fantastic year of historic preservation and rehabilitation efforts in Lakewood. We're absolutely thrilled that you could be here tonight to celebrate those with us.
Thanks. I'd like to call the property owners up for their name.
Absolutely.
16926 Clifton Boulevard, Trina and Jim Weiss. 1291 Edenola, Christina Smith. 1436 Grace, Lilian and James Dolls. Everyone, two years ago, the House, the Lakewood Historical Society House, we were about to go into their brand-new house when it was just studded. You could see the first floor all the way up to the rafters and now it's done, so everyone will get a chance to enjoy it again. Great, thank you. 1463 Grace Avenue, it's coming to Wonderoth and Amanda Vassal. And I have two in my hands for the last one. For 1720 Clifton Boulevard, Lynn and Richard Geis of Humor, as well as their contractor, Ron George from Marty Mason. Last one's out there in charge of, I think it's going to be Callan, that guy gets himself behind his equipment. That's a good photo.
Okay, everyone. If I could have, if you guys come over here, maybe? Perfect. All right. Count of three, one, two, three. Take a couple more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Coach Erbus.
For posterity, I move that we receive and file that.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Annette?
Yes, that finally brings this item to the line.
Item one, Committee of the Whole met this evening immediately prior to this meeting.
Discussed were the proposed third amended charter, which council has on our regular meeting this evening, ordinance sending that particular document to the voters this fall. Also discussed was the upcoming joint school board and city council meeting and what topics might be considered there. At this point in time, topics haven't been submitted, but we continue to deliberate on that. We also heard from Director Siley on proposed ordinance 27-16, which is an agreement to enter into, I'm sorry, an ordinance to enter into an agreement with a real estate broker for the sale of certain parcels on Madison Avenue that are vacant following demolition of nuisance structures in 2010 and 2011. Council entertained the possibility of passing that ordinance tonight on second reading, but ultimately elected to recommend adoption of that ordinance on the third reading. We had our procedural review in the form of a markup docket and we also had our discussion of the communication from Mayor Summers regarding the Health and Wellness Foundation Planning Task Force, specifically the process of selecting those members was discussed. The body at this time is contemplating an eight-and-six kind of split with the mayor, but all were uniform in the conclusion that what matters most is the individuals that we can identify to serve on the task force as opposed to the technical process by which they're appointed. Nonetheless, we look forward to a further discussion of that process. Council is leaning towards at this time appointing its approximately seven or eight members to that board in a collective fashion. I would move that that report be received and filed.
Second.
Motion to be made. Seconded, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item two, ordinance 2716, an ordinance to enter into agreement with a licensed real estate broker to market for sale of real property located at 11900 Madison Avenue, 1468 West 117th Street, and 148284 West 117th Street for a period of 120 days pursuant to Section 15507 of the Law Department of Justice.
Thank you. We do have a number, or at least one individual, signed up to speak on this this evening. That individual signed up to speak is Brian Essie. Mr. Essie, you can come up and speak, but I have to, you're signed up to speak, I think, on at least four or five different items tonight. And I have to say that it does indicate in the council rules that once someone has been recognized, they typically won't be recognized again until everyone else has been recognized. And I know that in the past, we've often recognized people multiple kinds and I understand and appreciate that. I would ask, though, if you're agreeable to this arrangement, that you would confine your remarks to a comment portion at the beginning, like now on this item or a later item, and then the public comment portion of the meeting, so that we are not having the meeting held up by like a half an hour of your discussion. I apologize that we're not able to entertain that kind of a lengthy discussion from every individual that's present, but it just isn't possible to run a meeting that way. So I'd ask that you either make your comments now or reserve them for a later time in the meeting, but unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to recognize you each and every time this evening.
But I can add four of, four of these, four items instead of the, in addition to the public comment.
Okay, I'll recognize you once and then the public comment is what I'm saying.
I'll be brief, brief for me, please.
I'd like to recognize you once and then again in the public comment section. That's, I, I.
Show us the paper that says that. Well, I will defer to the third of my comments. I want to speak on the charter amendment and I'll add my other comments into this, but I would note an objection to this process.
Okay.
So you want to call me at the item of, along with the others, at the, at the?
So you're speaking on the charter and then in the public comment section, is that right?
Well, if that's the only month one, then the council will permit you.
If you have pretty comments to make, please make them, but I, I will recognize you in addition on the charter. But, Mr. Essie, I just have to say, we cannot have each individual who attends city council each speak for a half an hour. It's not 25 minutes.
That's not my goal.
Okay, good.
Brian Essie, 15306 Edgewater Drive. My comment on this first item, and I was also going to comment on ordinance 3016, is brief. It is to follow up on Mr. Bullock's comment at the Committee of the Whole. I believe in order to market public property, you need to have them on the market for a long time. And I think records that recently came into my possession indicate that that was not the case with the valuable asset Lakewood Hospital.
Thank you. I'm sorry, ordinance 27-16 deals with parcels for sale on Madison Avenue?
Yes, we did not hire a broker or dealer or we did not market the hospital property for a long time. And my comment about this ordinance and 3016, which were about ready to sell properties through, with a licensed broker, we didn't do that in the hospital. And we didn't, and Mr. Bullock's comment is what I wanted to comment about and I agree with it. The market properties, you keep them on the market for a long time. The hospital properties marketed for a total of one month, as I understand, my documents came into my.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I believe that's the only person who signed up to speak on 27-16. So, I believe that's the only person who signed up to speak on ordinance 27-16. I would move that we place this item on second read.
Second.
Motion to be made. Seconded, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item three, ordinance 3615B, an ordinance of many ordinance 3615A adopted February 16, 2016, to enter into contracts for professional services and to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of repair, maintenance, and operating supplies, services, and equipment as authorized by the 2016 appropriation ordinance.
Thank you. We have one person signed up to speak. That person is Dean Dillzell.
My name is Dean Dillzell. I live at 1276 French Avenue. And I just wanted to comment on the rather ironic nature of the term, "to enter into contracts for professional services and to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of repair, maintenance, and operating supplies, services, and equipment as authorized by 2016 appropriation ordinance with the lowest and best bidder or bidders as otherwise provided by law." If I'm not mistaken, I believe a member of the administration mentioned to me last month that bidding really. that bidding really wasn't necessary, so I'm wondering why we're even bothered to include that in the language of the ordinance. In particular, I echo Mr. Essie's comments about, since we don't do any asset valuation, how we might go about determining the value of the bids we're getting. And one question I had to ask is, why are we spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on professional services for Lakewood Hospital if it's closed and in fact the city doesn't own it? Thank you.
Thanks. I'd just point out, for point of clarification, it does say with the lowest and best bidder or bidders or as otherwise provided by law, and that's exactly consistent with what we've heard before. In some situations, the law requires certain bidding requirements, in other situations it doesn't, and in those situations, it is otherwise required by law. Additional discussion of thirty-six fifteen, I would move that we defer this item as well. Sorry. Motion's made. Seconded, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item four, ordinance twenty-five sixteen, and ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of the shoreline of letting the Meridian condominium one two flat by Row Lake Avenue by the construction and installation of a revetment on the orderly property line of Lake Erie, including any and all preferences there too.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a number of people signed up to speak, and I just want to take a moment because Dr. Young, I believe, is one of those people. I think I initially indicated that the public comment section would be available to speak. I did not see that you're signed up to speak also on this particular agenda item, so you'll be recognized for the agenda item as well. So, I would, I'll move eventually that we defer this item, but we can go ahead and get into the public comment, I suppose, unless there are other pressing comments from council members. But hearing none, why don't we have Mr. Young?
Thank you so much for this opportunity, I appreciate it. My name is Rob Young. I'm a licensed professional geologist and a professor of coastal geology, and the director of the Program for the Studies of Shorelines, which is a Duke University-Western, Carolina University joint center. And I try and help coastal communities around the country and around the globe solve their erosion and coastal management problems. I'm not just a North Carolinian, I might add that my family goes back in the firelands of Ohio to about eighteen forties, and my father moved west to Toledo and graduated from De Vilmas High School and went to the University of Toledo, so we spent a lot of family vacation time in the state of Ohio. The most important thing that I want to communicate to you tonight about the proposed ordinance is that there really is no emergency, even though that word is used twice in the ordinance, and that council should not make the determination that there is an emergency need for any shoreline stabilization as indicated in ordinance twenty-five sixteen. And in fact, a report written by the consultant for the Meridian condominiums drew that very conclusion. The consultant basically urged considering armoring in twenty-five years, literally. Here's a quote, "Based on this rate, it would take approximately fifty years for the bluff to recede to the edge of the pool. However, action should be taken prior to that time. The regression of the bluff should be monitored monthly, or seasonally, or annually," which is a good idea. "This could be done by measuring and photo documenting the distance from the edge of the bluff to a known benchmark. You may wish to consider shoreline erosion protection when the distance to the bluff has been cut in half twenty-five years," by his estimate. Clearly, not an emergency if you can wait twenty-five years to bring in an engineer. What's the problem with building shoreline protection when you don't need it? Well, I'm going to quote from the United States Geological Survey's seminal professional paper on cliff erosion in Lake Erie. "Along the south shore of Lake Erie, impoundment of sand by structures and armoring of the shore has created sand-starved reaches that extend kilometers down drift." Oh, I shouldn't use miles, kilometers. "Loss of sand from the beach and the near shore also results in greater turbidity as a sand-starved shore and the near shore are exposed to erosion by frequent small wave events. This adversely affects water quality. Loss of sand from the near shore also alters the near shore biological habitat. Armoring the lakeshore to prevent shore erosion has had significant impacts on coastal sand resources and habitats," says from the United States Geological Survey about the south shore of Lake Erie. "In the end, this proposed revetment does not even guarantee that the cliff will not collapse from above like many do. It will be expensive, it will require maintenance, but it is not a guarantee." So, in summary, every additional shoreline structure that we build adds to the cumulative environmental degradation of the lake and reduces the overall amount of sand and gravel in the littoral system. That's the part along the shore where the sand moves up and down the coast. It's a death by a million small cuts. ODNR guidance demands that we assess these cumulative impacts. Removing sand and gravel by building revetments from this sand-sharing system reduces the protection for all property in Lake Erie. In other words, the more revetments you build, the more you will need to build, and every new structure makes it more likely that erosion rates will increase on your neighbors. As a result, new structures should only be built where and when absolutely necessary. There is no emergency here, there is still time to monitor and to be thoughtful. Thank you so much for letting me appear."
Our next speaker is Gabriella Kaplan.
My name is Gabriella Kaplan. I am one of the owners of both the Meridian and Whitten Place, and I want to point out to the council that we, the owners, in Article Eight, Section Three of our bylaws of the Meridian, which we're talking about right now, clearly states that only if it's an emergency should the vote of the owners be overridden, and the board should go to the city council and demand to have this as an emergent situation have ordinance. We have no emergency. The expert, as Dr. Young said, has said that we should wait for twenty-five years. That, by definition, for both my expert and the expert from the Meridian concurs, and so it is premature for you to demand to have this voted here and now. Another point is that we not only did not vote, but we were asked to sign for a bond. We were told that if we don't sign for the bond, we're going to have to pay upfront for this six hundred and ninety thousand dollar revetment. And of course, a lot of people are retired, they cannot come upfront with such a huge amount of money. So, to me, this is a form of coercion. People signed because they realized there's no other way, because they were told that we have no right to vote, and that the municipality is going to force us to do this project. And so, this is the circumstances under which the owners signed. So when you're saying that sixty-five percent of the owners agreed to this project, that is not true. That is an absolute blatant lie, and I want to make sure this is matter of public record. The board, the Meridian has lied to you, and you have gotten this information, so I strongly recommend that you investigate. Where is our vote? We want you to please prove to us that we have actually voted, and I would like to have you investigate and bring it back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Lynn Cox.
I'm sorry, that was a mistake.
Okay. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Thiers. Schaefer?
Schaefer, correct.
Okay. All right. You said something.
Good evening. My name's Jeffrey Schaefer. I'm an owner and former board member at the Meridian. I know that numerous boards have looked at this, and I'm so happy to see that the current board is moving this long overdue project forward. I want to just take this time to also thank the committees that have worked on this, as well as the council, for looking at the situation, and I urge you to move forward on this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leslie Worsak.
Leslie Worsak, Meridian, Unit Eleven oh eight. My biggest concern when I looked at the ordinance was Section eleven, where it does say that the owners at the Meridian petitioned in writing, the majority of them wanted this project. And again, we did not petition, we were not allowed to vote on this project. The only thing that we were allowed to do was sign that we would approve or would be a part of a bond, that we would allow the city of Lakewood to go forward and do the initial investment, and that our owners could have a bond, put this in their tax, their property taxes. That's all we voted on. And I use that word, I should not use the word vote. There was a petition out there when they got sixty-five percent, when they, the board, then it was brought to you and it was moving forward. So this is erroneous, Section eleven, that the majority petitioned you to have this done. You didn't even care about our backyard until all this came up with our board. And as far as several boards bringing this up, it came up ten years ago, and we were allowed to vote on it, and the majority of the people that have lived there voted it down at that time. I've lived there for twenty years, I have gone through many, many boards. There's a lot of newcomers, people that are not a part of the history, do not know the history of our building, they get on boards and they become very self-serving. I think you understand what that can be about. And also then, Section thirteen, when you have Dr. Young, what he just said, the information that was given to our board, one of them was Dr. Lewin, and Dr. Lewin said we could wait twenty-five years, even on this one party. He said this was something to monitor, and we are being pushed, pushed, I do not even know why, to do this project. Whitten started first, and now Whitten Place is slowing down, you know that, you're not pushing them to do this project, they are investigating more. It makes no sense to me. We had, we couldn't even have a second opinion. Finally, some private members of our owners got Dr. Young to come here to look at our shorelines, to give us a second opinion, and I was all for the fact that whatever he would decide, that would be a second opinion, and we don't need this project. So please, take that in consideration. I understand this is being pushed forward, and you're not even going to go with your regular three times of reading this before you make a decision. That is some rumor that has been spread by some people, could be even our board members. We have been told that you've already got the money, a portion for this, and we have a big green light go ahead. I don't know how the council, I mean, I know you have to plan ahead, but I don't know how you could approve money when you haven't even made a decision. This is what our board president told us at the most recent meeting, that the money's there, green light, go ahead. So thank you for your time.
Sure, thanks. I appreciate those comments. I think that there are some pretty significant misunderstandings, factually, of what is going on, so I'll help clear some of those up, but first I want to turn it over to the law director, Butler, who's going to clear up some of the procedural history.
Folks. Is that on? Can you hear me in the back? Okay. I wanted to respond, I'm Kevin Butler, I'm the law director for the city. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address the Section eleven argument made by Ms. Worsak. In Section eleven of your ordinance, which is not, to my understanding, going to be voted on substantively this evening, it says it was found that the improvements to be made pursuant to this ordinance have been petitioned for in writing by the owners of the majority of the foot frontage to be assessed. And the reason that language appears in any of our special assessment ordinances is because of what the charter says, that is, the charter affects how many votes of city council are required for the passage of this final ordinance, depending on whether or not council has received a petition from the affected property owners. If council has received a petition from the affected property owners equalling fifty plus one percent of those affected property owners calling for the improvements to be made, then council's passage of this final ordinance must occur only by a simple majority. If no such petition has been received, then council's passage must be, I believe, by a three-fourths majority, a much higher standard, under our charter. So that is why the language appears in Section eleven of the ordinance, because we believe we've, and council would thereby find, that a petition has been presented to the city. I will just read to you the language of the first paragraph of the petition that has been presented to the city bearing those signatures. And it says, "We, the undersigned owners of condominium units at the Meridian condominium, being or representing more than sixty percent of the ownership interest in Meridian condominium, petition the city of Lakewood to provide, construct, and install a revetment on the northerly property line of the Meridian condominium to protect the Meridians from erosion by Lake Erie, dah dah dah." So this is not just a petition, I believe the argument was made before the board, a revision of assessments as well, that this petition only asks the city to pay for and specially assess the property owners for this particular project, but somehow or another doesn't ask the city to actually press forward the project itself. I don't believe that's an accurate statement about what the petition says. I take no personal issue with what anyone here has said, I certainly understand why there would be opposition in a building full of owners over this kind of project, why there might be competing scientific viewpoints, and whether it's necessary, but I don't, I very strenuously object to the idea that the city hasn't followed its protocol in considering this special assessment. And particularly, I would object to the idea that the petition that we received doesn't actually call for the improvements to be made. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman O'Malley?
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to take a moment and say, I know that a number of you are here from Whitten Place tonight, and will be speaking before, I'm sure we will be hearing from some folks, and some of you here because of an anonymous and alarming letter that you received under your door today, which also contained a number of things that were very, very untrue about this project and council's process. First being that the meeting started at seven, and started at seven-thirty, so I'm sorry for those of you who had to wait a great deal of time to be here tonight. But also that, really, that this ordinance that council's considering is going to be substantially considered tonight, or that it will have an impact on the revetment at Whitten Place, which council's not considering right now, and will not be considering really any time in the near future. And so, I just want to clear that up. I know I spoke to a number of you over the phone and in person throughout the day today, but just wanted to reassure you, contrary to what you read in the note that you received this morning, this project will not have significant impact, really any impact, on Whitten Place, and the stabilization project at Whitten Place will not be considered for some time. And just wanted to clear that up. Also, there was a point that was made earlier, Mr. Chair, about us not having this go through three readings. Obviously, we will have this go through three readings. There's a committee meeting scheduled for next week, which Councilman Bullock will be chairing, and has been very thoughtful and solicited us some input from the community on this, and we'll continue to hear from you, and obviously welcome everybody then as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman O'Malley. I would just add to that, as you mentioned, that it is very unfortunate, there's been a lot of misinformation spread about this issue. Council has addressed this issue formally through process a number of times. Not only will we continue to for a few more weeks, but in the past, we've considered a resolution for a permit, a resolution of necessity, there was also the board revision and assessments meeting, which isn't entirely council body, but is nonetheless a... council body, but is nonetheless a body of city representatives. And so there's been obviously a great, great deal of public process that's gone into the various determinations and will continue to see that process through. I believe that actually, let me just make sure that there isn't one who signed up to speak on this. Oh, I'm sorry, there are several. Okay. Rosemary McCarthy.
All I wanted to say is the proposed ordinance to be passed by the council requiring a revetment to prevent lake area stuff.
Just going to get your mic up a little bit better.
Prevent lake area cliff erosion. Winton Place cliff at 12700 Lake Avenue, similar to the one already passed for a next-door neighbor, Meridian. I'm a Ginnit.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bonnie Sykes.
I'll just wait to speak on the.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, we have Tara Pepperd.
I signed up for tomorrow. I would like to speak in revised charter amendment.
Okay. Let me make a note.
Thank you.
Sure. Leslie Warsack, who I think already signed up or then spoke, is signed up again. All right, I think that that's all of it for 25-16. I believe we have a, I would now make a motion to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion with council on the motion to defer?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
I don't know if folks in the public are with the city. More, but I did want to respond briefly and maybe I'll make an extra read because I don't think that the folks who have the objections are very good. But we'll, as everyone know, knows, as council colleagues know, we're scheduled to discuss this next Monday, a week from now. This ordinance and the following ordinance related to the Meridian project, not the Winton project, because there is no Winton project. And to my mind, I'd be happy to also afford time to discuss the substance of the objections, even though the city's role really primarily is procedural and legal. We're essentially responding to Lake of residents who are, Lake of property owners who are petitioning the city to ask the fiscal agent and project manager, not something that we're initiating. But I think we can, you know, and I'll see if I can seek a response to the substance of the statement that was shared with us from the US Geological Survey papers prior to next Monday. And to the extent that we can double-check the facts about the extent of support or non-support by property owners at the Meridian, I think, my understanding is that there is a significant majority in support. And because of that, then it would make sense for the council to consider moving forward with our process. But I do know and respect people who have some concern about this project and so it's very apparent that we can, I think, address that next Monday.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I do know that the Board of Revision and Assessments to hear from, some folks were there at that meeting to testify to the fact that, yes, they had in fact signed petitions and so forth, but absolutely, I think the more we can investigate, the better. So thank you again for that. I think we have a motion in a second to defer. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item five, ordinance 2616, and ordinance advertised for Jada and entered who contracted the lowest investment in accordance with the administrative code of the City of Lakewood for the Meridian condominium special assessment review project.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item six, proposal application for new C1C2 permit classes to Nature's Oasis 15613, Detroit.
Thank you. We are in receipt of a report into this establishment and we have no statutory reason to object. I would typically defer to the board councilperson who's where this business is located. However, in this case, that's me, and I likewise have no statutory reason to object. So I would therefore move that we file without objection.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item nine, communication from Council President O'Leary regarding proposed third amended charter of the city.
Thank you. Dear members of council, you may recall that on August 15th, 2014, after an extensive and comprehensive review process, the 2014 Charter Review Commission submitted the proposed third amended charter of the City of Lakewood to you for consideration. Legislation considered by council last summer that would have placed the third amended charter on the ballot was ultimately not adopted. Following this letter is an ordinance that, if adopted by at least five councilmembers, would submit this proposed third amended charter to the citizens for a popular vote in the general election to be held on November 8th, 2016. I believe it is incumbent upon us to closely examine the proposed changes and to act swiftly to deliver for our residents on the promise of better government as we always strive to do. Council may either send the entire proposed charter to the voters as written, or make changes before doing so, or even reject this proposed version outright. In light of the customary August recess, it would be advisable for us to aim for action on this legislation before the end of July. And I'm asking for a referral to Committee of the Whole for further discussion and deliberation and move that that communication be received and filed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion with councilmembers on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 10, ordinance 2816, and ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Lakewood a proposed third amended charter of the city.
Thank you. We do have some folks signed up. Ms. Pepperd, I believe you, this is the item you would like to speak on?
Yeah.
Please come and speak. Thanks.
Tara Pepperd, 1278 Edwards Avenue. I have only a few things to say on this ordinance, and that is why the rush on this revised charter amendment. My understanding is that you've had this since August of 2014. My other question is to why anything related to the hospital was removed prior to the announcement of the closure of the hospital. I'm concerned that this is another example of a lack of transparency and I would like some justification for the emergency, in the emergency to rush this revised charter amendment. Thank you.
Thanks. We also have Brian.
Brian, that's the 15306 H. Water Drive. I appreciate the communication by the council president that the charter will result in hopefully better government. My comment about this, though, is it's just a document. And what I've experienced here in the last year in the city, for the first time being engaged in the political process in my life, is that the documents, the previous document just doesn't seem to be followed in every respect. And there's at times an effort to enforce the letter of the document and the rules and not the spirit. And then there's times where the letter is not adhered to and that's justification or rationalization for not following the letter under some pretense or argument or misguided process. So my comment is the document will only be as good as the people enforcing it from the council's perspective and from the executive's perspective and all of the folks here that are part of the executive branch. And I hope that when this makes it to the ballot and is passed, that we'll follow both the spirit and the letter of the new document. Thank you.
Thanks. I have more, I believe. Bonnie Sykes, or, yes?
I'll, yes.
Okay. I think, I think that's it for 2816. Unless I'm missing someone. So we have a motion to refer, I'm sorry, maybe a motion to reverse Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we voted on motion to receive and file.
Yes, I believe we approved the motion to receive and file and are now reading the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Unless I'm unclear? Okay, good. Then I would move that we refer the ordinance 28-16 to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. As, by way of discussion, my thinking in terms of referring to Committee of the Whole as opposed to rules and ordinances on this, which it could conceivably also be appropriate for, is that there is potentially the desire to meet with the Charter Review Commission again. And also, I want all of council to have the opportunity to have ongoing input and deliberation on such an important document. So for that reason, I would request a referral to Committee of the Whole. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 11, communication from Councilmember Allen regarding appointment of Community Relations Advisory Commission.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Dear members of council, this letter serves to notify you of my appointment of Jessica Sanderson to the Community Relations Advisory Commission for a three-year term commencing on January 1st, 2016. I thank Ms. Sanderson for her willingness to serve us for and for our community's work for state.
Second. Any comment or any discussion on that motion to receive and file? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 12, communication from Councilmember Marx regarding Dr. Judith Welch presentation to council.
Councilwoman Marx.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear colleagues, Dr. Judith Welch, medical director for the Cleveland Clinic Lakewood Emergency Department, will be here on Monday, June 20th, to give us an update on the emergency department here in Lakewood, share the services provided there, as well as some recent examples of care the full-service emergency department has been providing. She's also more than happy to address questions for our community. Sincerely. Move to receive and file.
Second. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 13, communication from Councilmember Bullock regarding council priorities budget hearings beginning in June.
Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear mayor, members of council, as has been discussed during city budget hearings in recent years, it is important that council allocate sufficient time to deliberate upon priorities that would like to reflect in the city budget, for which, although the analysis is prepared by the administration, the responsibility is allocated to council by and this charter is backed. Offering the budget is one of the legislative branches' primary powers. To ensure sufficient time to not only deliberate upon council priorities, both budgetary and policy, but also to incorporate any such priorities supported by a majority consensus into the fall budget book for the 2017 fiscal year, the Finance Committee will convene two or more hearings beginning in June. All members of council are invited to participate in these hearings regardless of official membership. And I would like to schedule with an eye towards the maximum number of councilmembers to be able to attend those. This timing will coincide with the introduction of the 2017 tax budget by the administration in early June, which officially begins the upcoming budget hearing process. An initial outline of topics to be discussed could include things such as, not necessarily limited to this, but a review of the budget timeline and a discussion on why council priorities are to be discussed so early, a review of the budget process itself, both on the administrative and legislative side. Third, an establishment of initial deadline for councilmembers to submit the list of priorities. Fourth, to establishment of an initial methodology or framework for evaluating submissions and agreeing upon priorities, for example readiness, affordability, complexity of implementation, breadth of support. Next, compilation and analysis of this list of councilmember priorities. Next, a discussion of how to reflect council priorities while maintaining fiscal discipline and continuing to build the city's financial strength. And finally, a discussion of how to integrate council and administration priorities or resolve differences. If our deliberations are successful, we will have gotten an early start on identifying current and future priorities and developing consensus around this. To my mind, this process should not and will not increase spending, but rather ensure that council's priorities are reflected in the budget alongside those proposed by the administration. I anticipate that this will be a process that council evolves and refines over time. I can think of no better way to get started than to jump in the deep end of the pool and start spinning. I request a referral of this communication to the Finance Committee for further deliberation. Move to receive and file that communication and refer to the Finance Committee.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 17, communication from Finance Director Pay regarding 2016 second quarter transfers and advances.
Director Pay.
Thank you. The attached ordinance is the second quarter transfer, which is reflected in the 2016 appropriations. Please refer to the Finance Committee for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 18, ordinance 2916, and ordinance authorizing the transfer and advance of certain funds.
We have, we have, we will, no, we don't have anyone signed up to speak on this. I would move to receive and file, oh, I'm sorry, we have Director, Director Seiling. No?
Director.
I'm the next one, okay.
I was just queuing up for the next one.
Okay. Sorry, we're all jumping the gun tonight. Okay, so for ordinance 29-16, I just move that we defer this.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm moving to refer this to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 19, communication from planning and development Director Seiling regarding authority to sell residential properties.
Now it's for Director Seiling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, I direct your attention to my correspondence. This is a request of council to grant authority to the administration to engage a real estate agent to list and ultimately sell the ten residential properties associated on balance insurance that came under the state's control as part of the master agreement. As you know, there are nine single-family homes in one vacant lot. I say we refer to a committee of choosing for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have folks signed up to speak on this one. The first such person is Judy Gillespie. Miss Gillespie?
I wasn't paying attention, so what am I talking to you about?
This is ordinance 30-16.
Sale of residential properties.
Oh, yes, thank you. Judy Gillespie, 23003 Chandler's Lane. My age is predictably. I wanted to know what your process is when you're selling ten houses, how you decide what realtors to deal with or to contract with, or what the protocol is, what the guidelines are, so that your brother-in-law doesn't get to sell all ten of them and make all kinds of money and everything. I mean, is there any way that you have a fair process of dividing these ten houses out to, you know, realtors that, you know, could lose the sales?
Thank you. I'm sorry, are you still, is that the?
Oh, yes, that was, that was pretty much it. I just, you know, I, I so hope for transparency, but so far that just doesn't work. But it doesn't stop me from asking about it, because I do believe that it's an important part of the process. If half the room behind you were realtors and they know there's going to be ten houses for sale and they know Lakewood like the back of their head, I mean, who would be the better ones to sell? So I just want to know what your process was.
Director Butler, do we have a sponsor here in the process?
Sure, I think anyone of the Board of Control could probably answer that question. The Board of Control is a public board under our ordinances, chapter one-eleven, which is our finance, our contracting authority ordinances. The board consists of the Public Works Director, the mayor, the Finance Director, and the Law Director in any administration in the city of Lakewood. And the Board of Control is established in order to provide an additional layer of approval after city council grants contracting authority for a particular type of contract. And in this case, the contracting authority of this ordinance were passed would be to permit the administration to enter into agreements with real estate brokers and ultimately buyers of these properties. The Board of Control would then have to approve the both sets of contracts, because they would very likely exceed the minimum thresholds for board action and, or I should say for board review. And in Lakewood, that's five thousand dollars for professional services contracts, seventy-five hundred dollars for all of their agreements. And so to the extent that we would be paying to one particular broker more than five thousand dollars as a result of these transactions, that would require Board of Control approval. Those meetings are open to the public, they're publicly noticed. In fact, some folks here may have actually attended those meetings before, and all are welcome.
And that's in the plain dealer or the sub-post or the website or where?
They're on the website.
The website.
Yep. And it's generally first, third, first and third Mondays of each month, or is it every other Monday? First and third Mondays of each month.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So, Ms. Gillespie, you're actually, your question is a fair one, but I wouldn't assume that anything's been decided yet. The whole point of the communication that Director Sidlin just read and ordinance about to follow is to put some clarity to those questions. So in section two of the ordinance that's on your docket that is about to be read, it says the director is hereby authorized to direct enter into an agreement for the sale of said real estate property. So that's a partial answer. I suppose council could amend that to say agreement or agreement to the point that that was important to a certain committee discussion. But I guess, I'd like to point out that I think the tone and the tenor of the question is, hey, why aren't things decided without us knowing about it? And actually, you're here when we're hearing all about it together for the first time. This is the public meeting where we're beginning this conversation. So nobody's too late, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that, you know, there's anything, any lost opportunity for input. While we're on the topic, I'll just share some of the, I think that I approached this topic with, I do think that there needs to be thought on the sale of these ten parcels, nine properties, and how we approach the market. Because the market right now, as a matter of fact, is at a historic low for inventory, or a modern historic low. I just talked to a Realtor, we have something in the neighborhood of forty-some homes. So here's an opportunity for nine homes to come onto the market, and we have to be thoughtful as to whether it makes sense to release those two or three at a time before you put them all out in one go. The person I consulted with leaning towards the wisdom of the former himself, two or three at a time to avoid excessive side-by-side competition. This location is an attractive location, we're likely to attract a lot of interest probably by investors if it's a policy goal of the city to attract owner occupants or committed to the long term. There may be attention given to incentives or deed restrictions or other tools in our toolbox. So anyway, it's a good set of things to consider, and we're all about to consider that in whatever committee this has referred to, which we haven't gotten an argument, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional discussion from council? Okay. Then we have additional comment from the public. Bonnie Sykes.
Bonnie Sykes, sixteen seventy-three Arthur. I just wanted to, I've just cautioned us about going too fast on this. We do have a referendum in November, and I don't want to create an emergency legislation to sell these houses on St. Charles and Bell. I would prefer that you wait until the results of the referendum in November are in and act in a timely fashion in accordance with the guidance that the ballot initiative will provide, and not a moment sooner. This is the rare instance when inaction is the better part of valor. We ask that you act by way of the voter mandate rather than a corporate dictate. Thank you.
Thanks. Chair. Can you add some thoughts on this topic? Myself, I just want to start out, though, with a point of clarification that council is not considering this as emergency legislation. It's just here on first reading tonight, speaking for myself. I don't have any intention to try and suspend the rules to pass it tonight, and I haven't heard that from anyone else either. So we intend to take our deliberation and do our due diligence and move forward. Councilwoman Bullock.
Thanks. Ms. Sykes, the voters did speak twice last fall, and I don't think that the, the current state of the law is that the city owns these properties, and so it's reasonable and appropriate for the city to make a decision about the management of these properties now, and not in a hypothetical future in which the ordinance may or may not be repealed, and in which we have a legal opinion saying that the fact of the repeal of the ordinance wouldn't undo the contract anyway. So I appreciate your point, but I think, I think that it doesn't apply here, and, and, you know, it's been more than once pointed out that the voters did speak. They spoke more than once. They spoke, depending on how you count, six times in favor of the hospital redevelopment, because you have four council members and a mayor and issue sixty-four, all affirmed by significant margins. Thank you.
Councilman Anderson.
Yeah, I just want to make a point regarding the real estate transactions that have occurred after the vote to enter into a new master agreement. I mean, these real estate transactions have already taken place. See, Columbia Road has transferred. The mayor factoring, we're talking about this, notion of these ten properties, is proof that these ten properties are now in the hands of the city of Lakewood. I mean, these are real estate transactions that have already gone forward since January. And, you know, to, that's just the point I want to make, is to stop now or to attempt to reverse real estate transactions that have taken place, because it's something that might or might not happen in the future, that's just, that's just not conceivable right now. So I look forward to having a robust conversation with my colleagues about this proposal, this course.
Thanks. I believe that was our last comment for ordinance thirty dash sixteen. Any additional comment from council? Hearing none? I would move that we refer this to committee of the whole, as has become our practice with property transfer-related ordinances. Oh, I'm sorry, we are still on the communication. Thank you, Mayor. We are? Okay. Then, in that case, I move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to receive and file? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty, ordinance thirty sixteen and ordinance to market for sale of real property located at fourteen fifty-eight Bell, fourteen sixty-two Bell, fourteen sixty-six Bell, fourteen seventy-two Bell, fourteen seventy-six Bell, fourteen fifty-one St. Charles, fourteen fifty-seven St. Charles, fourteen sixty-one St. Charles, fourteen seventy-one St. Charles, and fourteen seventy-seven St. Charles Avenue.
Move to refer to committee of hold.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-one, communication from planning and development Director Sidlin regarding vacation of Kenan Alley.
Director Sidlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, again, direct your attention to my correspondence. By way of quick description, Kenan Alley was served as the driveway off of Northwood to McKinley School site. This is a piece of right-of-way that's approximately half of that driveway width. There's been an overture from the developer to take on the improvements of that. The right-of-way was maintained to preserve some utilities that serve the school, now that there are private utilities to service the development in place. The request is that council consider vacating that portion and consider conveying that to that developer or future improvements and agents. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-two, resolution eighty-eight sixty-eight sixteen, a resolution declaring council's intent to vacate the portion of Kenan Alley line south of Northwood Avenue.
Let's see, we would typically refer this to a committee for discussion. Committee of the whole, I think, would be adequate here, unless there are strong implications in other way. I would move that we refer resolution eighty-eight sixty-eight sixteen to committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-three, communication from planning and development Director Sidlin regarding leasing of space in the community health center.
Director Sidlin.
Mr. Chairman, my communication summarizes what's in front of you. This is the third and final lease in the community health center, the ground floor tenant to Lincoln Child Care, much like the other two leases. We're asking, it's the time of council of committee of the whole to discuss these lease terms and eventually ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I would move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on motion to receive and file? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-four, resolution eighty-eight sixty-nine sixteen, a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with Lakewood Child Care Center for the lease of the real property located at fourteen fifty Bell Avenue, Suite one hundred, also known as the community health center.
Resolution eighty-eight sixty-nine dash sixteen has a couple of folks signed up to speak. They are, I'm sorry, someone signed up to speak, that is Judy Gillespie. Yes, I'm sorry, and Mr. Essie isn't on. I think we're going to have to revisit the sign-in sheet topic, it's getting a little bit difficult. In all seriousness, it's getting a little bit difficult, especially when we're moving a lot of items around in the docket, it's getting very hard to keep track of who's signed up for what. So I do apologize. I'm also cognizant of the fact that very unfortunately I missed Mr. Dildel's item completely, so I will try to, if he's still here, either afford him an opportunity to speak or otherwise discuss that.
Colored markers can help highlight the sheets, according to the, you know, corresponding from the item that we signed up for, that might help.
Need about thirty different shades of marker sometimes, but I appreciate that suggestion. I will definitely try and work through something, it's, it's a difficult. Thanks.
You can't walk on water either, can you? Okay, Judy Gillespie, two-three zero-zero-three Chandler's Lane. My only reason for coming up here and speaking is, with this building, am I to understand correctly that it's still owned by the city of Lakewood? Yes, okay. So with that assumption, then, since the child care has been there and they've been under lease, is this a renewal of the lease? Yes, okay. And are they the only leasees in the building currently? No. So then, the other people that are in there under leases, did this come in front of you as a council? Okay, I missed it, I didn't get all the meetings. So then, these are annual leases or five-year leases, or you guys get to decide then?
Depends on the leases, the terms are typically negotiated between the parties in the lease. I would have to consult this, this is one.
This is a three-year?
Two-year. Two-year.
So they've been on a two-year re-up kind of thing for a long time? I mean, they've been there since I worked there, in the eighties, so.
I don't, I don't know which of the leases were two years or.
Okay, okay.
I would have to go back and look.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, you know what I want to mention, since I'm done with my time, and I'm not done with my time? I don't, I don't think it's my age, but your microphones are now softer than when Mary Louise was here. When she was here, everybody talked louder. I even spoke to Mary Hagan about talking louder, because when she reads, she puts her head down as she's reading and it goes down the page and it gets softer. These people over here, when I went to the architectural meeting, I had a hard time, because I didn't think the architectural people had a microphone between two people. I'm just wondering if you guys could be cognizant of the fact that we really would like to hear what you have to say, just sometimes it comes out lonely, and I don't want to miss anything, Lou. Here, here. Thank you.
Thanks. As, as been mentioned a couple of times, I think, in committee meetings, possibly by the mayor, we're very excited about it. We will have audiovisual technology upgrades in the auditorium, definitely within the next several months installed, is that correct, Mayor?
Maybe six weeks.
Oh, wow. That's even faster than several months. Okay. That, I believe, was the last comment on eighty-eight sixty-nine dash sixteen. Oh, I'm sorry. Jeez, I'm sorry, Mr. Essie, please come up.
Brian Essie, one-five-three zero-six, Edgewater Drive. I think that last interaction between Mrs. Gillespie and the council president is really indicative of something. I have a lot of respect for her, she's not a citizen, though. I had asked for a lot of questions of this council and never received an answer, so it's, it's an interesting interaction. On the matter I'm speaking on here, it really points to a really big question. I noticed in, in the docket that a company called North Point Realty was a prior Realtor on the lease, and that is pretty much a Cleveland Clinic, a company that services quite a bit above the Cleveland Clinic, I did a little research on that. And leasing the Medical Arts Building, or the building is now going to be torn down, and the discussion about real estate brokers in the Board of Control, LHA was to have control of the real estate, but that was delegated to North Point, and there were leases that were timed exactly for the closure of the hospital over at North Point. In other words, they weren't, the realtors were being guided by Cleveland Clinic as to when their terms were up. And that gets to this point in this lease. This lease is an extension for two years, and it was similar to the lease that was passed recently, leasing, I think, the neurology or the brain center, whatever it was, to the clinic for two years. And that sort of seems to be tied to the teardown, or the rebuild and the reopening of the family health center. So there's something here that just doesn't meet the eye to a citizen like myself, I think I've been spending a lot of time trying to find out answers. And I'd really like to have an answer to that question. Why is it two years? And why is Ms. Gillespie getting answers to her question? When I asked about seventy-eight million dollars breakdown of the windown cost, I still don't have an answer, despite public records requests and, and my questioning this council and this administration here since January fourth. So, again, the documents that recently came into my, my possession regarding the hospital show that it was, the RFP process only lasted about a month. Metro was given less than a month to respond to the RFP, then they were given a slight extension. So that, those are my comments, and the notion of selling real estate and having a legal opinion, a legal opinion could be wrong, and you're perfectly within your rights to try to sell this real estate, but that doesn't end the story if the referendum is, it reverses the ownership. There, there is a damage claim, and the legal argument of the Fourteenth Amendment, you know, as I stand up here, I don't make legal arguments, I'm using fact of logic. And I don't want to get into debate about legal opinions, but. And I don't want to get into debate about legal opinions, but this, just logically, it could be wrong. Um, and that begs another question. I'll, I'll continue on in, uh, in my, my comments on the general public, which is, um, you know, that, um, we, we just don't know what's going to happen and caution should prevail. Thank you.
Thanks. We have, uh, please move to refer resolution eighty-eight sixty-nine dash sixteen to committee of the whole.
Second.
Um, motion's been made and seconded. Do we have discussion from council on the motion to refer? Hearing none. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes. That brings us to the end of our doctored agenda for this evening. Do we have any announcements from council? We obviously have public comment. Um, do we have any announcements from the administration or members of council?
Hi. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thanks. I just want to compliment the quality of a CPR training that I was able to attend at the Lakewood Department, uh, training today uh, to refresh on life safety skills that I hadn't learned since, uh, high school. And, uh, it, it just got me directed from our conversation at the last meeting. And I got to practice Heimlich maneuvers on Director Peg and the favor was returned. So, it was, it was actually quite fascinating and, uh, I recommend it to everybody.
All right, let's see what the budget hearings cough up. All right, so, uh, without further announcements, we will move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilman Allen.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to express, um, my thanks for the outpouring of support that the family received from the community and from my colleagues, council and across the hall. Um, it's been much appreciated very, very few times. Thank you very much.
Um, public comment. Bonnie Sykes is our first speaker.
Bonnie Sykes, sixteen seventy-three Arthur. Um, I just had a couple comments. One was about the, uh, pre-architectural review board meeting. There was one earlier this month, but the time and date was not on the One Lakewood website. So several people had to miss the meeting. So the planning commission assured us that the minimum notification was in the local sun post. And I was like surprised the city would be relying on print media for the, to advertise a meeting. After we've done this big upgrade for internet, could we make it mandatory that meeting notifications be listed on One Lakewood website as well as the print media? Um, also, the billboard across Bell, is that according to code? I just think it's like an advertising banner across the city street. I don't think it enhances the city and I, I think it should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I, Ms. Sykes, I do recall that there was significant concern and criticism from many of the residents in the audience about confusion about whether there's an emergency department in Lakewood. So now there's a sign that explains what's been true all along, that there's, continues to be and will be an emergency department in Lakewood. Isn't that exactly what a number of folks who are neighbors post the hospital development exactly asked for?
No, we wanted a letter essentially.
You wanted, I, I recall, you wanted a letter that said that the emergency department isn't an emergency department. But, number one, I, I wouldn't support such a letter because it's not factual. And number two, uh, the city didn't do that banner. I think it's done by the Cleveland Clinic. So, the, I, I, I guess what I'm responding to is mixed messages that I at least think I'm hearing, which is you want clarity to the public. So you've got some clarity to the public. And now I'm hearing a nitpick that it isn't pretty enough or something. So what's the most important thing? Are you interested in accurate medical information getting out to the public?
Is the sign legal? Was there a comment for it? I think that was the comment, the public comment that it's like.
So.
And you're blaming the public?
So, no, no distress, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm asking for.
It just is.
Consistent point of view. And, uh, I think if, if we were to do exactly what we're being asked for, which is to get clarity to the public about the medical services that are, uh, still available and will continue to be available in the Lakewood Emergency Department. Um, I, I don't know that the city's in a position to respond to every frustration, aesthetic or otherwise that we receive. I think the fundamental, most important thing is clarity about medical services, their continued availability. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy Gillespie.
Judy Gillespie, two-three-zero-zero-three Chandler's Lane. Okay, I was a very busy person this past week and I went, on Monday, I went to the, listened to Lakewood Mayor, was speaking with the little kubai session. And, uh, and then I, on Wednesday, I went to Lakewood Hospital Association meeting. It was just the most offensive meeting I've ever been to. And, um, Thursday, I went to the architectural board and I just about wanted to puke because everybody was so thankful. The Cleveland Clinic was just designing a beautiful building. And, and their footprint is just ugly as crap in the city of, of buildings of brick and mortar and, and cement. But somehow you guys are caving into the, the voice of Cleveland Clinic speaks so loudly in Lakewood, not the voice of Lakewood any longer. And I'm very disappointed that that's happening. Um, I had a chance to listen to the, or to watch the YouTube recording of Dr. Judith Welsh and Scott Gilman meeting at the Westerly. Now, the Westerly people have been listening to us. They've been reading about us. They've been reading what we have to say. And even though you say we're misinforming them, they're still coming up with some very good questions to the doctor and to, to Scott. And, um, unfortunately, the doctor might be a very good doctor, but as this public speaker, she, she had a whole auditory vote, maybe thirty people, thirty-two people. And when they asked a question from the back and the, and the ten people sitting in front of her, who are all senior citizens, probably couldn't hear what the question was, so they didn't understand what the answer was. It was really poorly run on her part as far as repeating what the question is so that she can answer and so on. But, um, our good old Mr. Scott Gilman was able to, to answer a lady's question about what is this referendum thing? And, and he very respectfully, and I'll give him credit for the first part, that he said, "Well, I can say that there's a referendum." And I wrote this down from the, from the video. There is a referendum on the ballot in November to repeal the ordinance that was passed by the city council, period. Then he mumbled, he said, "I don't," and then he mumbled something. I, I've listened to it like twelve times, um, not good audio. Uh, any more honest than that? So in other words, he was able to give them something to think about. He didn't give them any information about getting your hospital back, okay, or not getting it back, or reversing it or anything. He didn't, he didn't go there. And these people are hungry for the truth, for the honesty. And, and I don't think that they were given it. And I don't think that they were, were able to understand or have their questions answered, uh, because they all said, "Well, can you tell us how to vote?" And he said, "Hey, that's not my job. I'm in charge of ambulances," which is true. But he sure does have a comment about everything else. And, uh, and I, and I, and I have the recording. If I have time before my five minutes is up, I'll play it for you. Um, but I, I think the people are obviously seeking information so that they know what decision they want to, to make in November. And I think for the fact that you and the people behind me, since I don't live here anymore, are all of one family, it's a shame that there's the Hatfields and the McCoys. You know, there's the pretty stepsister, there's the ugly stepsister. And it's like, it's such a shame for the people that are caught in the middle to have the, the, the difference of what this doctor and what Scott presented was fifty percent of the subject. The other fifty percent belongs to the St. Lakewood Hospital people who do have brains and do have skill levels and do have ability to, to, because of our lawsuit, have, have uncovered tremendously correct information that the public needs to hear. But you're just presenting your side. In other words, if you're gonna go buy a Mercedes Benz, do you think that's the only, you're gonna go to one dealer, you're not gonna go to two or three? You're gonna say, "Okay, you're the only one. I'm gonna listen to just you." No, you can't do that to the people. You can't make them listen just to you and, and get, and, and feed them what it is that you want to feed them instead of what they deserve to hear about what backroom antics have gone on and what manipulation has, has been denied them. I, I really believe that I, I want to directly criticize the leadership of the City of Lakewood on just how you are representing the city, city government in this room. I recognize that you are all choosing to manipulate not only the senior citizens in this presentation, but all the residents who are trying to make a conscious effort to try to understand what is really going on here with the hospital or the lack of hospital services. Unfortunately, I believe that they are only receiving fifty percent of the available information required to be able to formulate their own decision. The Cleveland Clinic voice is spoken out of each and every one of your mouths and reflected in your attitudes as well. Why don't you present both sides of the ED information? Why not include St. Lakewood Hospital's doctors who also speak?
Ms. Gillespie, I'm sorry, we have to leave it there.
Oh, you're gonna miss the wrap-up.
Mr. Graham is our next speaker.
Speaking of the, uh, Cleveland Clinic sign, the real question is, did they have to go in front of the architectural review board to get that approved? I haven't really gone to the trouble of trying to do a measurement of that, but I believe it's completely out of context with the allowed size of signs in the sign ordinance that this council was, had as its recent agenda, trying to amend the sign ordinance. So, I think what it shows is that the Cleveland Clinic is considered above the law by the administration of this city. And they can do whatever they want. And I heard the word thrown around a little earlier by a councilman of having some restrictions on the real estate being sold, like the restriction placed on our, on our hospital that kind of destroys the value of a very valuable piece of property. These, I think, are some important things to think about. Uh, the, uh, chairman, the president of council, uh, mentioned the idea of taking a look at the rules as far as addressing council by speakers. I think you're all aware that I have had the honor of serving on this council and serving as the president of council for a couple of years. And during those years, there was no sign-up sheet. There was no need for it. If somebody wanted to address council on any given item or at the end of the meeting, they simply came to the microphone and waited to be recognized by the chair. Very simple procedure. You don't have to worry about looking at the list in it. Worked very fine during all those years that I spent on council. And then, uh, one other thing, the, uh, charter amendment. The second amended charter, which is, I think is what is called the most recent amendment, where the entire charter was amended and the pass was passed changing the entire charter. The very next year, they had to come back and amend a portion of that charter because they didn't know what they were voting on. The idea of amending the entire charter is really totally irrational. You should only be tampering with the major document, those portions of it that absolutely require changing. And I would hope that the, this council would not consider placing, uh, a charter amendment on the ballot to, to, uh, change the entire charter. That makes no sense whatsoever. If there are portions that need to be tweaked, you take a look at those, figure out what's the best weight language to have, and then take a vote on that to put that on the ballot. But the, trying to amend the entire charter, which was only done once before, uh, some years after I had left council, and it required them to, the people really didn't, on council at that time, didn't know what they were voting on, obviously. And I, I'll have to try and go back and find out what section it was. I don't know if Mary Hagan remembers that coming back. But there was a section, I think, if I remember right, it, it had something to do with the operation of city council. So, uh, take a close look at it, I would hope. Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, for your kind of clarity, is, is a charter review not done by mandate every so often? Ten years? Yes. Uh, the Charter Review Commission, so that the charter that is before us, uh, that their amended proposed charter, um, comes to us by way of the Charter Review Commission, uh, which is a nonpartisan group that's assembled, uh, by our charter every ten years um, for the purpose of examining the charter to determine if there are any changes that need to be made. And this group, uh, faced with that question, came back and said, "Yes, uh, some of them are quite radical in the sense that we think that we have a document that, when you read it, is not readable to the public. And so we want to create a document that is drafted in our modern-day parlance in a way that we can read it and understand it." And also, they pointed out things like, all throughout the document, because it is something that's been amended over and over and over again, there's all these inconsistent terms for the same thing, used in one place, one word, and in another place, another way, but they're trying to describe the same thing. And so I know that not everyone gets as fired up about legal drafting as some of us do. Um, but I think that there are a lot of reasons substantively why a total revamp of the charter is a really good thing. And I'll let those for another night, uh, and for the Charter Review Commission themselves to explain. Um, but I, I just wanted to say that also in response. Um, our next speaker is Brian Essie.
Again, one, Brian Essie, one-five-three-zero-six Edgewater Drive. I think more of the dialogue that just occurred shows that, that the laws may not be enforced. I disagree with Mr. Graham. I don't think it's about Cleveland Clinic at all. I think it's about the, the folks in this room that are tasked with enforcing the law. Now, I don't want to pick on Councilman Anderson or O'Leary, but they both made comments about, um, if at the time of the repeal, uh, that was pending for purposes of the referendum. Uh, I think Mr. Anderson indicated if, if it was something illegal, it would change his mind. And, um, I think in another conversation on the phone, Mr. O'Leary said he was still open to that if evidence were to come forward. I'm not here to make a legal argument. I'm just here to present some facts, um, that have come to light and I think are, are quite important. The first public comment that Mr. Summers made at the, on January twenty-eighth at the Beck Center regarding Metro, he said, "We had two meetings with our narrow strategic group and the Metro group. We never got a written letter of intent from them." True. "There was some serious interest on their part strategically in starting off as a family health center and considering whether or not they would consider running it as a community hospital. It was a very exciting possibility, and then the beginning of October, they withdrew their interest, so it went away." Mr. Summers indicated in response to a question by me in, uh, July of last year, I think it was July. "I am not aware of any second proposal for Metro. I've not seen any proposal." There turned out to be a PowerPoint demonstration I was pursuing at that time. I pursued it much after the Metro proposal, where Metro went away in two thousand fifteen. Again, I commented earlier about the brief period of time that Metro was given to do, in a, a response to an RFP. Mr. Gordon, April twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, in this body. "Metro is not." Mr. Gordon, April 27th, 2015, in this body, “Metro is not interested,” he said. He knew Dr. Butros. A couple of weeks later, Dr. Butros expressed some interest. I won't get into the political pressure that was apparently put on Dr. Butros and Metro in 2015 to back down, and I have evidence of that, but I recently got a document in which someone fairly high up and involved in the RFP process at Metro wrote, “I think we should...” In response to a politician or an elected leader who was making an inquiry on behalf of a constituent on January 15th of 2015, the day after the announcement, “I think we should be open about the fact that we tried and they...” Burens, the selection committee, closed Burens, “turned us down. They would rather have an outpatient office with CCF over a hospital with Metro.” I want you to ask yourselves, does it make any difference now if the process was flawed? Does it make any difference if Metro's bid was suppressed and looked over? Does it make any difference if our executive leader, throughout the process that this body was deliberating, misrepresented the Metro proposals in Metro's interest? Does it make any difference? I think it does. I'm disgusted, disappointed, especially since I worked, or tried to work, with Mayor Summers. I worked behind the scenes to get that interest rekindled, and I begged him not to do what he did in his letters last May. He ignored me, he shut me out. I could go on with other personal statements I've obtained that show damaging information, and I ask this body to reconsider what it's doing here, especially the sale of these properties. Thank you.
Mr. Graham. Which I think you got back to, and I think also you, frankly, are unfair and contorted words. You know, if I put a couple of your statements that we could go back and develop a record and put them up against each other and cross-examine your statement on one date to the next, I could create the appearance of a contradiction or mistruth from your own statements, just talking to yourself. That's the nature of the ability to pull nuggets of this quote out of context with that quote. In addition, I think the quotes that you were referring to...
We weren't selling this hospital, were his words under oath.
If I followed the narrative, I think what you were quoting was one party's subjective summary after the fact of what you thought he heard, and you were comparing that to ex de pariahs comments at a public forum, which is as transparent as it gets, and quite frankly, very courageous leadership on the part of Mayor Summers, because I think he knew full well that there were going to be a lot of concerns and criticism about the proposal. And I'll explain once again, I don't know that any city leader who voted in support of the Mass Agreement said, “Hey, this is our first and best choice.” I don't think a single city leader...
It wasn't marked ever. Fairly openly announced. And you were part of it, Mr. Essie.
Sorry. The impression that's given is that, you know, I'll repeat once again, I think what the city did was we negotiated the best we could do, in the circumstances we could do. The choice was take something or nothing, so we negotiated for something. We got quite a lot of something, on multiple layers for the community. If it was an option to retain an inpatient hospital, I would have supported that, I think my colleagues would have supported that too. It wasn't, and as we've been through this ad nauseam over and over, Metro withdrew twice, once in 2015, when it negotiated with the... Excuse me, once in 2014 with the board, and once in 2015, when council members, including several of us up here, tried very hard to find out if they had a concrete proposal. So they withdrew twice, and in addition to that, we know that they've lost funds from the county, which they had been counting on, and they've got other concerns now with, I think, counterproductive competition for the Toronto ones that are coming from university hospitals. So, I think that the impression you're getting with the quotes out of context are inaccurate and based on a misinterpretation of the facts by yourself, and they leave others an unfair impression. And I wish frankly that you would not come with fragmentary stuff and a negative tone and impugn the character of pretty much everybody that you can find in city government, because I think it's inaccurate and it leads your neighbors down the dead-end path, that isn't fair and doesn't go anywhere.
I wish you would be honest with the public. Mr. Butler, did you have a comment?
Only that it doesn't, in my view, make a whole lot of sense to argue these points when Mr. Essie claims to have lots of secret, private information at his disposal that he's not sharing those. So I would suggest that if, you know, we want maybe additional statements that he's gathered from as-yet unnamed people with respect to how Metro Health officials may have felt as if they were being treated, we should see them. Otherwise, and frankly, the ordinance has been voted on, the contract is being executed. In my view, it may not make a lot of difference as to whether or not anything that Mr. Essie is saying is true, but if we're going to have these kinds of debates every two weeks, probably makes sense for Mr. Essie to share the identity of the people he's quoting so that we can actually appreciate what he's saying.
Thank you. That was by Julie Giacconi-Giacomo of Metro, the head of business development. I think you should be aware of that because that document came out of discovery. But if you'd like me to share those things, I'd be happy to do it. Mr. O'Leary, you indicated when and if the time came, you'd be open, and I'm open to any public forum on that. It's not me that's been secret. I think I only give five minutes. To cast aspersions on me by the law director, who's done that before with Mr. Butler...
Would you be so kind as to share the documentation with council or the administration or vote electronically? That would be appreciated. We can review it.
This is documentation that came out of the discovery that I just read from. You want me to share all of the statements, the private statements I've got and make them public, people, so that you can go in the back room and shoot them down? No.
Okay.
I'll share them with you individually to the extent you reach out.
Tara Pepperd is our next speaker.
I think we need a process here. This isn't a courtroom, and I don't mean to be a lawyer...
Thank you, I appreciate that. Tara Pepperd is our next speaker.
Thank you.
I'd like to offer Brian Essie my five minutes.
I'm sorry, you can speak, or we can move on to Ms. Matula.
Tara Pepperd, 1278 Edwards Avenue. I'd like to express my gratitude to a constituent like Brian Essie, a constituent who I feel is very knowledgeable and also has integrity. There were 500 votes different, there was a decanting plan. There were advertisements on NPR of declining patient volume, declining patient volumes, and financial woes. We were lied to, there was nothing to say, who wants to run our hospital? It's wrong. The voters will speak in November. Your actions are unconscionable. It is shameful, it is bad government, to move forward as you are when you know that we will speak in November. We will repeal the covenant... Or, sorry, we will repeal the ordinance, I'm sorry. Justice will be served. So I stand before you this evening, I stand before you on behalf of the poor, the elderly, and the underserved of my community. The Lakewood Hospital Foundation was a venerable charity with over $50 million designated for not just structural care of our hospital, but care for the poor and underserved, for those who cannot take care of themselves. Lakewood Hospital Foundation cannot exist without a hospital. As stated by the honorable former councilman Ed Graham, you cannot give away a city-owned asset on pennies to the dollar. It is wrong to close a viable city-owned asset that not only took care of the poor and elderly and underserved, it was the greatest economic engine generating over $1 million in income tax revenue. Our finance director gave false and misleading information to the people regarding the rise in taxes due to an empty hospital, when our taxes never paid to support this. This is not okay, it is irresponsible, and it is wrong. People were confused when they voted. Our 500-vote difference, our taxes remain reasonable because of our hospital. We are thriving on a rainy day fund that is going to run out. The constituents will speak in November. I implore you to stand with us. I implore you, restore this asset, stand with us. We will work with you. Remove the non-compete clause, do everything in your means to seek another partner, perform a genuine RFP. Metro would have run our hospital, had an honest and fair government, had we had a honest and fair government. At some point very soon, the revelations of this proposal that you denied will be revealed, and I look forward to justice. It's very upsetting to me, I don't look forward to it in a vengeful way, I look forward to it because, again, when you have a foundation of $50 million for those who cannot take care of themselves, you can't take that away. In this interim period, protect our hospital, protect the roof, the foundation, the structural integrity. Nothing will replace 1,300 high-paying jobs. I don't want to see another vape store move in, I don't want a Walmart. The trickle-down effect of this loss is catastrophic. Please confer with Brian Essie, please confer with Ed Graham, confer with our group, please stand up for what is right. This would be good government, fact and logic. The referendum will reverse your devastating actions. Stand up, please, or step down. Thank you.
The Lakewood Hospital Foundation, as an entity, very much continues to exist and serve the needs of the underserved and the poor in our community. That is, they were not a party to the defendant agreement, their assets remain intact, and that body has expressed their intention to remain a separate entity and continue to serve the needs of the poor and underserved in our community. Director, may I?
Yes, I'd like to make two clarifications that you mentioned in your statement. First is, I believe you're referring to an article I published in op-ed in the Cleveland.com. I did the cost that was the estimate that was given to make improvements in the hospital to bring it up to where many different consultants and professionals had come up with that amount, I gave what that would cost in taxes. Did not say taxes would be raised, taxes would go up, that is not what was in that article. It was what that would mean in taxes to come up with that. Second, the rainy day fund. I implore you to please go to the city's budget documents so you can understand what the city's rainy day fund is. The city has not had a rainy day fund until, I believe it was 2014, that council established it, due to a sizable estate tax. Council had the means, from the Ohio Revised Code, to establish a rainy day fund, which is about 15% of the prior year revenues. So that's the rainy day fund. You may be referring to the city's fund balance, ending fund balance. The city's ending fund balances have increased from almost a three-day reserve of $300,000 at the end of 2007 to close to $6 million to the recommended 60-day reserve at the end of last year. We have not, the city has not deficit spend, with the exception of last year when we had a 27th pay that we prepared for. So this council has been, or this council since 2008, has been building and setting aside reserves. So to make statements, to make statements that we're spending our rainy day fund is flatly not true. Since that rainy day fund has been established, it has not been touched.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Pam Latula.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm saying, my message to you is that you don't need a microphone, and if you want to be trained to project your voice, if your microphones aren't that good, then you can project. This is not a very large room, okay? I'm Pam Latula, 11813 Clifton Boulevard. I want to say, I had a coworker when I first got involved with Save Lakewood Hospital last April 2014, who said, whose son works for the city, and I'm not going to go into that. Pam, why are you getting involved? This is a done deal. I have had other people walk up to me in the last year as well, that know some of you and knew some of the things going on. Why are you getting involved? This is a done deal. I knew Mr. Sam O'Leary was going to be president of this city council because somebody was on a plane to DC talking about how Mr. O'Leary was going to be the council president and not Mr. Bullock. And somebody on that plane texted me that they overheard this information. So you folks think that you have been not showing us transparency, but some things that you have been doing have come out, some things that you are doing and have been doing will come out, and that's what Mr. Brian Essie is talking about. The letter from Metro dated October 4th, 2014 clearly states that there was a deadline set up between Mr. Mayor Summers and Metro. It was October 1st, and Mayor Summers was to get back to Butros. He did not get back to Butros, and that is why Metro pulled back, okay? It has nothing to do with they're not interested. You reneged, unprofessionally did not honor a deadline the two of you had made. It is true to me, and I liked the comment that Brian Essie made, because I just made one a couple of weeks ago, you folks would rather have an outhouse with Cleveland Clinic Foundation on it, instead of a full-fledged, comprehensive, inpatient, top-notch hospital with Metro Health on it. Again, I've talked to a number of people, who have spoken to some of you, who have heard, we don't want those people here. I'm really annoyed by that. It's interesting to note that council president, Mr. O'Leary, would point out that we, as a city, will put out bids on projects with tens of thousands of dollars in value, but we use a bid-steering process when we are engaged in transactions worth tens of millions of dollars, like Lakewood Hospital was.
Didn't I say that?
You, we don't, we need to put out bids for the sale of these properties on Bell, these little miniscule houses, but we did not have a comprehensive, a legal bidding process for the sale of Lakewood Hospital. We've talked about that for a year and a half, Mr. O'Leary, and that's exactly what's happened. The transparency is not there. Lakewood Hospital Foundation made a change, one paragraph in the organizational articles of incorporation in early December, to expand the activities they would support, including the local community beyond Lakewood. Where's the transparency of the Lakewood citizens? That money for Lakewood Hospital Foundation that was supposed to go back to the city is now going to be used for beyond Lakewood. That is exactly what happened in August of 2015, they changed, I mean, in December of 2015. So it is not reserved only for Lakewood. Furthermore, we do not have a full accounting of what's happening with those funds. We do know that the EBITDA in 2014 was a positive $6 million for Lakewood Hospital, and it went to negative $8 million in 2015 because of the effective execution of the decanting plan of Lakewood Hospital. I have to tell you, in the Lakewood Hospital Association, they also confirmed only 52 patients a day in April. Losses are $200,000 to $400,000 a month. I would like to ask Mr. Bullock, I would like to say that I don't hear Mr. Bullock, one of his arguments for closing Lakewood Hospital is that it was losing money. I don't hear Mr. Bullock saying, “Shut down the ER since it's losing money.” Thank you.
Ma'am, I don't think emergency rooms ever make money, and the point is that you should have emergency care access. In this case... In this case, the emergency room is sponsored and funded by the Cleveland Clinic, and that's all that I think that's...
Several months ago, Cleveland Clinic downgraded Sagamore Hills Emergency Room from an emergency room to a urgent care, because it was not making money.
Please be seated, speak in here, Mr. Young. Thank you.
Kevin Young, 1598 Elber Avenue. Yeah, Sagamore Hills was closed because the clinic said that it was losing money. You know, I just came back from vacation, and vacation was wonderful, man. You know what they say about having to, you can't see the forest from the trees. You know, I got the kind of perspective I needed on a lot of things. My business is booming, thanks to a proposal I made to the company I worked with last year, you know, and the other part of my life, of course, is coming to these meetings and fighting for justice. You know, some margaritas, some conversation about the deep-sea fishing trip we took, the beautiful sun in Mexico, talk about putting my boat in the water, really was quite refreshing. And it did give me the perspective that I needed to come back and take another look at what's going on here. I did talk about the hospital at one point. We were talking to a doctor and his wife, they were from New York City, and my lady, Lori, brought up the hospital, and the doctor said, "Well, you know, hospitals are closing all over the place, this is a thing that's going on, I don't agree with it. You know, why would your situation be any different?" And I explained to him that our hospital was owned by the people of the city of Lakewood, and I explained to him that it was a public asset. And when I did explain that to him, he was just dumbfounded at the way the hospital was given away and given up. I got back home, and my computer is filled with video files from all the meetings that I've recorded here and some of the other projects I've worked on. I had to move them to another hard drive, and I had a chance to look back on some of the speeches that have been given here over time. And the perspective that I had developed gave me even a clearer sight of what's been going on here. There's a lot of blocking maneuvers going on in this city government that are really horrible. You heard Brian Essie bring some things up that are incredibly, I don't know what to say about them, but it's just so wrong what's going on. The Metro proposal just being completely deep-sixed. You know, and then getting down to things like when we presented the petitions, they could have gone on the March ballot, but that was delayed, and it didn't have to be delayed. And now that it is delayed, oh, you know, we're talking about that new building we're going to build, and we're talking about selling parcels of land, oh yeah, we're moving on, when in fact, it's up for a vote in November. A prudent government wouldn't be moving on these things knowing that it's going up for a vote. A prudent government wouldn't do that. My perspective tells me that you all ought to take a step back, maybe you ought to start to take a trip to Mexico, and take a good look at what's going on here. Because like me, I was maybe too close to the trees to see the forest. I think it's time for this government to take a step back and see what it's doing. Thank you.
(applause). Any other questions before council this evening? Hearing none, move to adjourn. You have a motion in a second, any discussion? I hear none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, adjourn. Thanks.